Welcome to the bathroom.
Yes.
I turned it off when it was 45 and 3.
I know.
Do we have?
Yes, we do.
Bob, is this the thing I'm calling?
Our technical problem is that, because that's the only probably I've got. Are we all technically sufficient?
Yes, we're all set, thank you.
We have the meeting tonight with the Finance Committee over the review of the special town meeting warrant. And I guess before we do that, we should announce to the public, a reminder that next Tuesday night, the 14th, is special town meeting. At 7:00, Norris School, we have 16 articles to review that evening, one of which is the budget, to bring the budget into balance. And the other is, some of the articles are community preservation, and some of the articles are to spend the free cash, which is why the Finance Committee or the review of those articles and the warrant are here. So where do we want to start?
How about number one?
How about number one? Number one includes...
Article 1, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate monies as identified in the town's omnibus budget as attached for such fiscal year or to take any other action relative thereto.
And that budget would include the raises for various non-union town employees, which we've spent a lot of time talking about. And that number, Diana, do you have it?
Yes, it's the total amount of the raises increase would be $30,403. However, we're actually asking for a lesser amount in free cash to offset that because we had a credit from the vocational tuition.
So it was 23 or something like that?
The amount we're asking for to be added from free cash is 22,561.
Well, we discussed this last week, and we voted against the article, four noes and one abstention, primarily because we don't know where the money, we don't think the money is available for it. We realize we have free cash. My understanding is that our free cash was certified at $176,543. I'm not sure, Diana, has some of that already been allocated toward budgets like regional school or?
No, the only thing that's, the first time we're using it is during, is in this warrant.
Okay, so it's available right now, 176. And this warrant with the 16 articles, when you add up all the monies that are being moved from free cash into these departments, reduces free cash to almost nothing. I mean, it's an under $50,000 amount. And we've already got 203,000 of free cash allocated in this budget as of the annual town meeting. We had that available leftover from last year. So every amount that we add at this meeting next week is going to increase the 203 to 253 to 283 to 303. And it's going to reduce each time we vote one of these, it's going to reduce our 176 to 156, 126, et cetera. So we're going to watch FY10, FY11's reliance on free cash go from 203 up to wherever it might go based on next week's meeting, while we watch the 176 available to us go down. So, I mean, the obvious result of that is, when we build next year's budget and we're trying to replace 200 or 300,000 dollars of free cash, it won't be there. We're going to have that as an immediate shortfall. The articles we read about state government is that we should expect another cut in our state aid. And so we, as a Finance Committee, look at these articles, and anything like Article 1, which is adding monies to a budget that we think already has too much reliance on free cash in it, as much as we'd like to support those non-union employees, given the budget scenario, we simply can't. So we're recommending no on that article for those reasons. And that's what we voted last week before we had a chance to talk with you. You may change our minds, but that's where we stand at the moment.
Like, there's one other item we added to go with that. If we give the employees an increase, the only group that hasn't gotten one would have been the police department, correct?
Correct.
So obviously, the police department should get one, and they're going to negotiate for one. So it's not just $23,000, it's another 25 or 30 on top of that. So then we're maybe in the red.
I can't disagree with you. I have to say that I voted to allow this article to be put on the draft agenda, but I voted against the article in its final form. And we never took, the vote was simply to put it on the warrant. I don't know that we ever took, everyone took a stand as to whether they would support the article at town meeting or not. I suppose the alternative is, we can always pass over, should we choose, at town meeting, that warrant article or not present.
It's the omnibus budget, so we can either vote up or down on the whole.
Yeah, we have to amend it.
That's true, because it concludes the other items. You'd have to... There are things like assessors' maps in here. Is the regional adjusted in here?
Yes, there's three lines.
So we have to do it.
Right, there's three lines that are in there regardless of the wages. That's the assessors' maps, the regional school addition, and then the reduction to vocational tuition.
So I guess what I'm saying we voted on last week was, we voted against the wage increases in this omnibus budget. We didn't vote against the other increases. We realized we have no choice but to fund the regional, and if we were to vote the whole article down, we have to have another special town meeting and put that money back in. So the alternative would be a motion to amend the omnibus budget, striking out those raises. That's what we're recommending. The three items that have to, are the assessors, the regional school, and what was the other?
Vocational tuition.
But that was a down call.
That's right, that's down.
Down, so someone would have to be able to explain that. You said vote tuition?
Yes.
If we, hypothetically, if we voted that amendment, how much of the free cash do we need?
You don't need anything for the omnibus budget. You'd have a reserve, you'd have a credit or an excess levy.
So if we voted to amend that article at town meeting, dropping the wage increase, then the budget could stand the way it is?
Well, you don't have, yes, yeah, you wouldn't have to vote Article 2 either. If you don't vote the wages, you don't have to vote Article 2.
Right.
So then you're not using free cash, basically, to balance the budget.
Pass over Article 2.
If we, hypothetically, if we were to, if we were to take a vote not to fund the raises, then we, someone would have to make a motion at town meeting to amend the article, to strike that 20, how much is the raises?
30,000.
30,403. And to allow the omnibus budget to stand the way it is, with the pluses and minuses, because you're aware, right, they're aware that the vocational tuition went down, and that's a large part of what we're gaining.
That's why it's not 30.
Right, that's why the offset, that's why it's actually a positive offset and without the use of free cash, without the raises.
So the options from the floor might be to override the amendment then as well?
To amend the article.
No, you say, we motioned from the floor, but the floor, the town meeting itself could vote down the amendment and vote 2.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, sure.
That's why it's Article 2 there, to make sure, just in case.
Oh, yeah. If the amendment is made, then it can be voted down, and the article can pass just like it is, and all the raises will go through. So the question becomes, you've taken a stand on the raises. I don't know whether this board has taken a stand. Well, we're curious, at least we're the three of you standing, because we'd like to know before we get there, whether we're standing alone on this issue, or if you feel likewise, or you would like to argue with our position right now. That's what we're here for.
I think, because we don't have a full board, you may miss the full, full set of opinions.
We have three there, Tom.
Well, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
So the quorum, you know, I guess the question buzz, does Quorum want to take a position?
I have my individual position.
Well, that's what we're looking for, because that individual, individual position will then reflect our collective position.
That's right, so from the beginning, actually, when all this guh-hah-hah came about, because I was proposing a compromise which we foresee, at least with what we are in negotiations right now, would change their negotiating position in light of the fact that some raises have been given. So I was proposing a percentage of the proposed increases, not the entire amount, but some fractional amount, 25 or 80%, something like that, as a gesture of doing whatever we can to continue to promote such morale as the town has. That was, was and is my position.
What percentage is the increase?
Because that's what I needed to know also.
The wage, for the wage and classification plan, the people that are on that plan, it's 50 cents. And for all of the other department heads that are not, well, I guess anybody else is 3%.
So it's 50 cents an hour?
Right, 30 cents, right.
It was lopsided Johnson. My sense was that to have something that is quite symbolic, nonetheless a real gesture on behalf of the town, to recognize that, yes, we do have a lot of very good employees who have suffered long and hard in these difficult times, but same time to share themselves.
What's the payroll that this would affect?
Town hall employees.
So it would be a dollar amount, is it? What's the payroll for that?
Do you have the, yeah, there's a sheet that shows the breakdown. It's not in our package tonight.
The same way you should throw a percentage of that on the board.
Do you have that, Jess?
Yes, I'm looking for it.
But, you know, the 55 cents may reflect more or less than 3%. I don't know, I didn't work out the number, because it's, though, that 55 cents is on the lower end of the scale.
But as usual, 3% of my salaries, more than 3% of a custodian's salary. So it'll be a lopsided, no matter how you...
But, and my point on 3% is, when we're limited to a 2.5% increase, we're already...
That was just a number.
No, 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 but I'm saying, my point all along, simplistically, has always been, if you're, if you can only raise taxes by 2.5%, when you give away 3% or 4% to a raise, it's got to come from somewhere.
So a total of, oh, this is their increase. Some people are getting $195, some people are getting...
So I don't have a thousand number of payroll, but that's just the dollar number. The increase was...
No, the other, the other, excuse me, the other factor that we talked about last week was Ed came in, and I don't know whether you heard the conversation about that he needs, for salt has gone up by a third or something, and he needs $50,000 if it's an average winter to cover his chemical bill.
Yeah, we had a question on that. If that 50,000 is applied now, would it be a better price?
Is that actually salt?
It's, he termed it chemicals, most of which is salt.
Because salt has gone down slightly.
And he was also reflecting increasing gas prices in there, too.
And calcium fluoride.
And calcium.
Which is different than sodium fluoride.
Of course.
Yeah, he called it chemicals. He was looking at his chemical budget going at least a third if it was an average winter.
So we won't have anybody left over to fund that at the end of the year. Does this police amount again? I mean, if we give it to one, we've got to give it to the other. It's going to take another 20, 30,000 of them out of there.
Yeah, part of our position is based on what we have for reserves, which is very little. Our stabilization fund, which isn't available to fund these kinds of things anyway, but it's under $100,000 for the first time in quite a while. Our free cash is not high. Last year, our free cash was certified at 342,000, and this year, 170. It's exactly half of what it was last year. So we had the luxury of using some of that to keep our budget for fiscal 11 alive, but we don't have that for next year. We may get a cotton state funding, and we have virtually no reserves for a huge winter roads bill, which Ed is predicting is going to come down the line with 50,000 more for Saul. Plus, we always know we go over budget even without that 50,000 more for Saul. And so you start to ask yourself, just to cover that at the end of the fiscal year, where do we think we're going to have the money if we spend this 176,000 of free cash, one article after another after another? I realize a couple of these articles are just moving it into stabilization funds, so we're not really spending it, we're keeping it on reserve, but it's a low number to start with. That's what has us nervous. And then we look forward, and we see fiscal 12, and this year, what your board said to the department heads was, you have negotiated raises, 2% in the schools, 3-plus percent in the highway, et cetera, but you'll have to figure out within your budget how to pay those raises, and each budget department head figured it out. Are they going to be able to figure it out again next year, when it's even 2% or 3% higher than it is this year? And will the departments we're talking about in Article 1, let's say Article 1 passes and everybody gets a 2% or 3% raise, next year, when we go to each of those individual department heads and say, okay, you got that, but figure out what other line item you're going to cut back on so you can continue to maintain that level of wage? I'm not sure anybody has answers to any of those questions. And the fallacy of that is, we end up cutting expenses so that we're paying, we're giving raises so we can't drive the cruisers or we can't plow the roads because we're not putting, there's not enough money in the gas account or the, or the chemical account or whatever it is. What, that's what, historically, what the easiest thing to do is. It's not easy anymore, because every department head at these meetings we've been holding the last two years has said, the budget that is really strained is my expense account. I used to have this, and it's been cut by 5%, cut by 2%, cut by 5%. I can barely run my department anymore, and we're potentially going to be going to them next year to say, cut it again if you really want to maintain this level of wage. Now, this isn't a high level of wage. There's no reason not to give these increases if the town had the money. All of the workers that are being included in Article 1 deserve it, and it'd be wonderful to do it, but we can't, as a Finance Committee, sit here and say, go ahead, town, we can afford it, you know, that's fine. These raises are deserved, and we can cover it with free cash, because we know that free cash is, it's not free and it's not available. I mean, it's available, but we need it so desperately for the rest of this fiscal year and into next fiscal year, that if we spend it all in December, we're going to look back and say, I mean, somebody could look back at us and say, why didn't you tell us that? And we're going to tell them that next week, but they may decide to do it anyway. So it's your board's position that you don't support the raises, but the other part of... The other... I don't see any choice about the other parts. The other components of the omnibus bill. Correct. Regional school, we have to pay that. We have...
But would you support, as Jess mentioned, something symbolic, something less than the 3% for the salaried persons?
Well, yeah, it depends on what your cost, because we support the raises, we just have, there's no funding for it. Everybody thinks they deserve it, and that's not an issue.
What about the issue, the union wages versus non-union and the morale?
Again, we fully agree with everything you said, there's no doubt about it. We can be nice people now and say, let's push it through and worry about it next year. And when next year comes, we'll worry about it, maybe layoffs. Or we can talk about it now.
Right, you're trying to avoid it.
And that, from our point of view, we need to talk about it now and let people know. If it's voted down, it's voted down.
The article, the article I saw in the paper was a 10% cut in state aid.
Five to 10.
Five to 10. We had four last year, is that correct? I mean, anything, well, even four again would be awful, but if it's five to 10, I don't know. I mean, then we can't afford our budget anymore, and we need another solution that we haven't located. Well, it's going to be, it's going to have to be, next, next year it'll have to be bodies that go. Well, that's, you know, and so to add wage increases and then next year say, cut back on your staff because we're trying to afford these increases, is that logical, right? It's not. So... I find it hard to support the raises, and I've spoken against them from the beginning, and we've maintained no raises all year, to give in at this point in time just seems to be applying the face of logic.
I mean, I would think, Jess, that maybe to compromise with your compromises, a lump sum payment which doesn't get added to the base, so we don't deal with it next year.
Sort of like a bonus.
I certainly support that, very, very good idea.
Well, there was the idea thrown out months ago about time off, unpaid time off, but like adding vacation days to a person's yearly vacation total, which wouldn't, I mean, you probably get paid for vacation days, so these would be leave days or whatever you call them, where people would at least say, well, I didn't get a wage increase, but I got some time to myself to devote to other personal things that I wanted to do, as a way to try to give something to those non-union employees without having it cost the town money. But in honest, in fairness, remember when we went, took the town hall from five days to four days? Town hall employees, it's my understanding, still take five days of vacation as if they work a five-day work week. So we did do that already in the past when we cut back from a five-day work week to a four-day work week. It's my understanding that town hall employees still take vacation based on a five-day work week.
But they would only get paid what their regular week is, so if it's only, if they only get paid for four days, they only get, they don't get more pay when they take vacation.
But I think what you're saying, if you work Monday through Friday, they take Monday through Thursday, and Friday is a day off and take the following Monday as a good day. Is that so weak in their minds? Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm not sure I follow that, but I've heard that the vacation time is still based on a five-day work week.
Well, let's go back to the lump sum and use your, these ideas. We could give them options, just a number throwing out, $500 bonus paycheck, where you get four extra vacation days, one-shot deal. It doesn't go next year, it doesn't...
Doesn't want to retire.
You get a choice, what's more important to you?
But $500?
Well, that's just a number.
I mean, that's...
It could be $1,000, it could be $750.
No, no, I, no.
Or $600.
A dollar amount or some...
$500, $1,000, that's right.
Well, most of the, and you'll see by looking at most of the dollar amounts, or, I mean, there's, there's some that are more than 500, but there's many that are, I mean, I don't remember what they were, but you'd have to look at that and try to make a basis for your decision.
When you get down to the departments, that's where the big difference is.
Right.
But again, giving them something to say, we appreciate it, we don't want to put you in the hole next year, so we'll give you, I don't know, $500 to me, or four extra vacation days to me, is a nice thing. Personal opinion, if you guys are telling me, but that's a way around putting it in the base, which is going to kill us next year. I don't know, do you guys take the motion?
Well, I mean, but before, the problem with that is administering that kind of a, you know?
Well, that's true, but I mean...
Well, I'm saying, first of all, within the article, and...
No, we take it out.
And then what are you going to do with the police department anyway?
They're going to do what they're going to do.
Well...
You can only negotiate to the best of your ability, saying, we're not giving this group raises, we're giving them a one-shot deal.
We did already do that, and now, we negotiated with the police department, and we reached a contract in principle.
Okay.
And this would now...
This would change it.
Would change it.
Yeah, well, yeah, we don't know the details.
Well, to some extent, I mean, you did negotiate some things.
Well, we negotiated based on a, on a statement about these raises and everybody else. We said what we were doing, and these were your choices, and they made a choice based on what we told them, and now we're going.
Do you think this would change their choice if we gave the other, yeah, I don't know the details, you have to...
I think it would, I know it, I was on the other side, it would.
Is there any way to make a reasonable concession?
We haven't finished negotiations, have we?
We haven't finished, and that would be sort of...
Well, it hasn't been, yeah, it hasn't, it hasn't been reduced, it hasn't been reduced to writing, but in principle, we reached an agreement.
Just trying to figure out an idea to show the folks that we appreciate them, but...
I frankly just can't support these, any raise at this point in time until we know what's happening. That's my position, and it's been that position all along. Those of us who work in private industry have gone several years without seeing raises, and to expect municipal employees to get a raise at a time when we're scraping by and next year we're going to be cutting budgets again, I just, I agree with that, it's fallacy.
I will say... We may need to save that one for next year.
I mean, you could resurrect anything next year, I'm just trying to figure out how not to add to the base, because that's what's going to happen.
Well, I think that's a good idea, but any, and that's, that's a perfect idea, because we don't want to be adding 2%, that we then add 2% to next year, which compounds the problem. But I think the fallacy that everybody gets a raise is...
Well, the problem is, municipal employees did get a raise, just some did and some didn't. That's what I feel is the problem. I know we can't really afford it, but just giving some gesture of appreciation, I think it makes a difference, whether it's, maybe it's not 500 per employee, and it's 400. What would be the total, where the person's getting raises there?
It was 20.
Why don't you look at that, see?
That's the totals. Can you see that most of them are above that 500 amount?
I still, this is a personal opinion, not the Finance Committee's, but as we look forward, and if we see some bad news awaiting us for fiscal 12, then I do think that some of these departments that have got raises built into their contracts again for next year are going to have to do it with a level-funded wage budget, which means some kind of furlough, layoff, whatever, because they won't be able to transfer from expenses. We all know that the expense budgets are already to the bone. So it's almost like saying, yes, you're not getting a raise if you're a non-union employee this year, but don't look at the other group as getting everything, because next year, those may be the very groups that are in the worst position if, in their departments, they're trying to give raises in a level-funded wage budget. Or a caught wage budget, heaven forbid that we should have to do that, but we might. And now you're talking about personnel and hours and layoffs, and the words nobody wants to use, and we've avoided them, but we've avoided them with things like 203,000 of free cash to keep the budget afloat. We're not going to have that next year.
Do we have any cost-saving initiatives in the works?
I'm sure there's energy if you look at that article.
Those are only your department heads.
But what, you're talking about centralization of different things now, is any of that still out there that has some potential cost savings in next year?
In this coming fiscal year?
Fiscal 12?
Fiscal 12, yes, but I wouldn't say fiscal 11, would you?
Are you talking about fiscal 11? The year we're in, we're halfway through.
12, 11.
Well, we haven't talked about that, really. I think he's talking about just internal type things, no.
Oh, they, they talked about centralizing services, you know, I forget exactly.
This is the Hampshire Council, the government's trying to have sharing police services, you know, sharing animal control services, all those kinds of things.
Sure, you have the 400.
So actually, I'd like to propose that we make a motion up here, that we consider a form of lump sum payment, which would not go into wages, but into the non-union employees. We'll make a motion to that.
And, okay. Anne's doing some...
Yeah, my math. Well, if you did just the non-directors of the department at $500, that's 24, 24 times 500 is $12,000.
That's non-departmental?
Non-departmental.
Just, just not...
With department heads, that's 33 employees, and let's say you paid them $400, including department heads, that's 13,200.
Hey, you may want to make a distinction between department heads and non-department heads, too, because salaries are a few versus here. I mean, I, I work at the university, I've been at it for three or four years, but from my point of view, I'm fine, because my staff hasn't been cut, and they got, just got 100.
But still, those are other options.
That may be a popular thing to say amongst the, you know, department heads, but...
Well, we got a motion on the floor.
Can I have a motion? If I can amend my motion, consider the amount of $250 as a lump sum payment for the non-department head, the non-union employees.
How many employees here, non-departmental?
24 non...
So 250, that's 4,000. Is that right?
250.
6,000, 24, yeah, 6,000.
250, that's 24, that's 6,000.
All right, and just, you would have to agree with...
6,000, right.
Yeah, 110.
6,000, 24 positions.
And before, we got a motion, we don't, before, we don't have seconds. But how, how...
That may be a popular thing to say amongst the, you know, department heads, but...
Well, we got a motion on the floor.
Can I have an amendment motion? If I can amend my motion, consider the amount of $250 as a lump sum payment for non-departmental head, non-union employees.
How many employees here, non-four?
24 non...
So, 250, that's $4,000. Is that right?
250.
6,000, 24, yeah.
250 each, that's 24.
All right, and just, you would have to agree with...
6,000, right.
Yeah, 110.
6,000, 24 positions.
And before, we got a motion, we don't, before, we don't have seconds, but how, how would we, I can't get my brain around how we do this.
Have to amend that from the floor, and, and put another amendment. Amended by taking X out and putting Y in.
To grant, but to be specific, and grant only a $250 raise to the bowling, how many people?
24.
24 people.
And take out the 30,000 or whatever it's in.
Do you think there's a great deal of difference between the 250 versus 500? Well, yes.
$6,000.
Well, yes, I knew, I didn't phrase it that way. That's a significant difference in the budget.
But here's a, wait a minute, here's a question for you. Are you going to give the same, we've got somebody here who's the librarian custodian, who works four hours a week, you're going to give them the same $250 flat sum that you are going to give to an employee here who works 40 hours in the communications center?
Actually, the library directors on that list, too, so you'd be giving the same amount from, to the directors you would to the...
I mean, you've got 40-hour employees in the communications center that you are now going to give the same flat raise to?
His amendment.
I recognize that, and my, the fundamental premise here is that, yes, it's not fair. There will be some inequities, and no matter what you do, it's absolutely impossible to be completely 100% fair. This is a gesture of goodwill to recognize those employees, and I would like to think that the gesture itself should be parsed up and divided up, and based on that employee's specific raises. This is like a bonus.
I gotta tell you, this is personal opinion. I would have done $500, because $12,000 is, you know, these guys made this, you guys, just, 250 is, 500 is...
I could amend my motion.
You amended your motion?
Wait a minute, then you're giving a $500 raise to a four-hour...
One-shot bonus. You can work out that detail, I don't know that that's proper. It could be...
You've got a four-hour employee, a seven-and-a-half, a two-hour employee.
Pro-rated.
That, this doesn't...
Okay, well, let me reconsider my motion in light of the...
Why don't you draw your motion and start over?
Draw a motion, Mr. Chair. I'd further like to make a motion that we calcule, consider, and grant lump sum payments, which are not salary, up to and including the amount of $500 for non-union personnel, in proportion to their number of hours worked.
There's a motion. All right, there's a second motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So, that actually, it would be less than that $12,000?
Yes.
So, actually, giving is 500 pro-rated.
Four-hour guy gets 50 bucks.
He's only four hours, somebody, if ever four hours, he'd give you back.
All right, motion. I've named my position all along, so I'll stay consistent. All in favor?
Aye.
With the, finance committee would like to take a vote on whether they would support that.
No, no.
Did you go, was that a yes?
Well, no, no.
If they made an amendment next week, we could, should be asked to take a stand.
John thinks we're right.
I, I mostly...
My husband thinks we're right.
No. I think they deserve something, you want to last week. The issue is, we don't want them to...
I'm just saying, consistency is the going.
But because of the funding allowance from the budget issue, that's why I said no.
In addition to trying to keep every dollar aside from what's coming.
I think this is going to be about $8,000, $9,000.
I understand that.
So, I would, I would support. I don't know what you...
I don't.
I would support.
You just gotta be, if you don't have a lot... You can have a split vote, Tom, that's fine.
I'll say no. What did you say, Jim?
No. Two and two.
All right, so two and two, the motion, your motion would fail. If that was a motion, I don't know whether there was a motion to vote. We're not, we're just responding if somebody asks us next week, "What do you think about that amendment?"
You're evenly divided.
Because you'll make the amendment, right?
Somebody's going to have to draft that amendment. I don't know who to...
You want that ready for next week.
Yeah, somebody better...
Diane and I can do it.
I guess, so... Since it's your motion, you'll be, you'll be there to explain Article 1.
And make it voted down, by which you've got an alternative to give them.
Yeah, and, and at this point in time, I don't know what the other two members of our committee would vote, and...
Find out next month.
You know, in the past, we, I don't think, since I've been on the board, we haven't had anything but a unanimous support, so this will be the first time. Your board is going to be split, and certainly, at least one vote will be there.
Well, there, there's no way around the fact that this is a difficult article. It's emotional, it's, you talk morale, that fits in the description. There are lots of ways to look at this article, and none of them is wrong, so whatever people decide, they'll decide. And we'll just try to present the facts. We're not going to try to get into the emotions of it. That's it. They have to help.
But now, how does Article 2 intertwine with this? This becomes the issue.
Well, I don't know how much of Article 2 the amendment would require. That's, maybe David figures that out, or maybe Diane figures that out.
No, we'll just plug it in once we know what the number is. Once we know what the amended amount in Article 1 is, then we'll just plug it in.
So, that's, that's the amount of free cash that we need to fund any raise, 22, man.
We'll have to have different numbers based on which thing ends up passing.
You know what you're going to need, is you're going to need that employee list with a number next to each name.
She has...
Right, but I'm saying, this list will have to have a, if you're doing it proportionate, it will be what that person's proportionate raise will be.
And for the amendments, you need to have two amendments ready for the floor, one to amend Article 1, if that works, one to amend Article 2 for the new amount.
Which then leaves a little bit more free cash, but not...
Well, I could leave up to $40,000.
All right, so that, that takes care of Article 1 and 2. We're okay with 3, we're
okay with 4, but we can take it, I guess, one at a time. 3 seems reasonable. It's a gesture, mostly.
It's to discipline ourselves, to save some...
Right, and it's a good discipline to, for us to try to get used to, and Article 4, likewise. And we both, we all said 5 to 0 to go along the path.
Those, 3 and 4, you're unanimous on?
We are.
And I think our board was unanimous.
We get to the next one, and one of the questions asked was about which buildings are involved in this, and I, I guess, if, you, you could just say to us that this is something you've been working on, that you're fully supportive of. We just need a little guidance from you.
The background is that Kurt Bojolay came in and gave us a detailed description of the proposed investment grade audit by Siemens, and how this would play out. So, basically, this opportunity is to have this audit under $8,500. We don't have to go beyond that. If we decide to go beyond that based on the findings of Siemens, then the idea is that they would basically self-finance some of their equipment, and we would pay for it out of the profit, the savings.
Oh, the savings, right. We, we had this at the university a few years ago, and they saved tens of millions of dollars. Obviously, a smaller scale here, but that's how it worked. You pay a little upfront, then you get a share of the cost savings, and there's guarantees that if you don't get those savings, you get the money back, so...
So, I understand the business model, from my perspective. It's done as an ESCO energy...
It's an ESCO.
An ESCO, right.
Didn't, didn't we ask that person to come to, one of these articles, I thought it was this one, or is it the next?
No, we'd asked about, we'd asked for the, for the resolution for Ken Alstine to come, and he did.
Oh, that's the competitor. All right, so, the $8,500 comes from where?
But we will have somebody at town meeting to, to talk about it, free cash.
It is, okay.
Would you be prepared, Jess, to speak on that article?
Well, Kurt's going to be there, and we have Catherine Miller coming from PVPC to talk about it, too. And I talked to Robert.
I, I would like to have us, so that when we're there, someone's responsible for the article, to know the ins and outs, so that we don't end up like we have on occasion.
South East Town-owned properties.
It's all, I believe it's all of the building.
Even the townyard and fire...
Yeah, okay.
It's all, yeah, and it also, it includes Larrabee, just to evaluate it, to make sure that it's up to, you know, and then, we also, they're also considering the water department systems, like the pumping stations and stuff, anything that we spend electricity.
So, we're going to have a number of understanding on what's going to be done.
Right, to give the MOU, but then we would not have to pay the $8,500 if we decided to go forward.
Right.
So, that's, are there suggestions for retrofitting and all?
Essentially, we have to have the $8,500 ready to spend, if, if we don't agree to their program.
Can I ask one question? Did we approach Wemiko or something like that? Because they do free energy audits.
Well, this, this is more...
It came out of the Energy Committee.
Yeah, this is more, this isn't really an energy, I mean, we've done, Norris has had an energy audit, I mean, this is really just, the IGA is the investment grade audit that we need to bond to do the project. So, this is more, we did a preliminary audit, we've done a couple of energy audits, but this is really, right, really goes with the program, the ESCO program.
I hope so, but too many times, we've been sitting there with an article, and nobody knows where it goes.
And John, further to that as well, we have right here, we're also talking to Hampshire Council of Governors about being aggregate purchasers of electricity. So, that's, Siemens is more as the equipment itself, not as the, but we're talking to Wemiko about the electric, the current itself, not electrons. Electricity is not electrons.
And 6 is related to 5?
It's a 5, that's it.
Okay.
Are we okay with 6?
7, 7 is the chemicals. We're taking $33,000 and putting it into Winter Roads, yeah, well, we...
But I thought it was 33. I didn't think it was the whole, entire 50.
No, we, we didn't give it the whole 50.
No, we gave a portion.
We, we debated back and forth whether giving nothing, all of it, and we came up with a compromise of 33, simply because, as we all know, we too often under-budget Winter Roads.
Always.
And we've been trying to come closer and closer to a realistic number, because the fallacy is, oh, you can always overspend in Winter Roads. Well, you can overspend it this year, but you've got to pay it next year.
Right.
And it comes off your, top of your budget next year. So, that's where the 33 came from.
We voted no on that, only because we feel that the reserves in the town are low, and if there's an emergency this year, last year, we had that terrible ice storm that the state decided didn't meet the qualifications for any kind of state reimbursement, so we ate the whole bill. And we just feel like that and any other imaginable emergency that would cost the town possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars, or a large amount, we don't know where those reserves are, but right now, they're in free cash. And so, to take the money out of free cash and put it into a budget line item, we're not in favor of. Even though, we do agree with you that that is a budget line item, that by the end of the year, will be overspent, and we will have to come up with the additional funding somehow, even if it has to carry over into the next fiscal year. But our feeling at the moment is that we're so concerned about the reserves that the town has to fund any unforeseen emergency, that putting 33 of it into Winter Roads account doesn't seem necessary to us.
Let's keep it more flexible.
So, that would just remain in free cash?
It would, for, our perspective is, leave it in free cash.
What was the bottom free cash number that we had, if we did everything?
149?
No.
Oh, the, what we had left?
Yeah.
We did everything?
Yeah.
It was 27.
27, so this would make it 50s?
60.
60.
But again, knowing that, it's a reason at some point, but it's just, if you need it before the...
Put that to 14.
So, theoretically, we'd have to wait until annual to vote that out of free cash?
Well, we could vote out of free cash at any special town meeting throughout the rest of this year. If we run into some emergency in, in March, where you need money, we could pay it. But, again, it's, it's very logical, what you've done with this article, and 33, I'm quite certain will get used. It's just that we're not, we'd rather keep it in a flexible account than lock it up in this particular line.
All right. This is the town will vote to transfer the sum of $5,000 from free cash for technical, technology service account to pay for the transfer from here to across the street, to move our systems over.
So, this is to move our hardware, and we address the software, so who's this going through?
We just awarded our new IT contract to IBS, the Business Solutions, East Hampton.
And it's about a $5,000 contract?
Well, no, it's probably going to be more, but that's what I asked for, because I really didn't have any idea, and they don't either, because they haven't, we just hired them this week. So, they have, they, what they're going to do first is an assessment of all the systems, and that basically is, is so that they can provide the, the appropriate support for the systems, but also, it's going to help us in the move, so that they know what we have here, and what is going over there, and how it's going to be configured over there. But when we get over there, we don't know if there'll be other things that come up.
Are they going to move it and install it? Is that part of it?
No, they're, they're not. Well, we haven't gotten that far. No, we've, we, the next article for the movers, they would move all the computers. We have to unhook them and re, you know, take them apart, put them back together, but the movers are planning to move everything in the building.
You just have to go on what she, what she said.
Sounds like it, huh?
Yeah.
You okay with it?
Obviously, if it's not used, it goes back, so...
Right, we would just leave it.
Okay, um, fine. We're okay with that.
9 is, is the actual $5,000, but the actual physical move, we've got a quote from several movers, and $5,000 seems to be sufficient to move most of the office equipment from here to there. Is there a moving account, actually, it says, or is that a new account being created?
To, 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 to create a moving account, yeah.
To create?
I could put to, to create in a motion. I just put to the moving account.
Yeah, we didn't know if there was already money in a moving account, we were adding to it.
No, but what we've done so far is, there's $10,000 in furniture account.
20.
Or 20.
20, that's your special article.
That was on the capital plan, right.
And so, now, we've got the $20,000 furniture account, $5,000 technology to move over, and $5,000 physically to move over.
So, you could say to create the moving account, or that?
Well, we are going to spend the furniture account there.
Can't we do like they did in West Hampton, just hand it away?
Hand it away.
Hand the books.
Jim, you, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
There isn't any money, you haven't got to pay for it.
Okay. Article 10, we voted 5 to 0 to, to support that. Oh, that was the $226.
Well, it's a prior bill.
Right, we ought to pay it, right? I was, I kept, I was looking at the number, I couldn't make it come out right now, I was reading, it's 22,000. Article 11, and that takes a 9/10 vote to pay.
Right, always did.
And we, we, was it three, four years ago, we ran into the problem that we didn't pass, we didn't get enough good pass?
Didn't pass it.
And we ended up getting sued over it.
Well, we have a reserve fund that might be able to care of that.
I don't think we, I think you have to...
You have to vote it.
You have to do it in special, and it has to be 9/10. Somebody, why didn't that get paid?
Oh, absolutely.
Why didn't that get paid?
I don't know.
Can we find out, so we can explain it?
Well, it was the town clerk's office, they just, it was just an oversight. It was, and there was actually three bills, and W. Mason gave us credit for two.
But let's find out why that didn't get billed, because someone's going to ask why we didn't pay that bill at town meeting, and we should know why it didn't get paid.
Okay, I'm going to read Article 11. I think it's good for our viewers to hear...
Yeah, go ahead.
To hear the, or article, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from free cash to the police department wages account, to pay for additional staffing in the police department, or take any action, and all of it there, too.
Bob, when we were talking before about the police, the next article is part of the way we're paying for that officer. Our officers are all first responders, and we give them a stipend to be first responder trained, and we've talked to the fire department, got some cooperation, that the fire department is now going to fund those stipends, which we think amounts to $10,000 a year. As part of that money, we're trying to, a little bit more towards that extra officer, that we're, this, this 25 is this, put on for some other officer. The second article brings over $10,000 from the fire department for first responder training, to help pay for that officer.
Tell us if we're wrong, but a $25,000 turns into $50,000 next year, plus benefits, because we're only doing it half a year. So, it's a $50,000 hit on our base budget, So it's a fifty thousand dollar hit on our base budget, plus fringes next year.
Minus whatever we can get from the fire department.
From overtime, from overtime.
Minus the ten.
Reduce, reduce.
So it's roughly fifty, because you've got fringes to put on.
But that, when we were talking, I forgot to, we were saying, we've lost two part-time officers, so the hope is we've saved something by not using the two part-time officers, and hopefully saving something off the overtime budget, which amounts to about five thousand dollars an officer right now.
If that was the case, would we need to transfer this money then?
Because we're not going to be able to save all the overtime. And we're, and the two officers only plug in and open shifts. So this will help get us better coverage in town, that we, that we need.
I mean, you don't have any uncovered shifts or anything like that, just that we have a single, or do we still have any?
I think the chief told us that we're still some uncovered shifts.
Because we, we dealt with this over the years.
Years ago.
We've been trying to get there.
But we got to that staff level, but the, the money's still there if they, if they go, so that would be-
We, we've been led to believe we, we need this officer.
I looked up, we need another officer, it's just, it's fifty thousand to the base budget next year. And I just, yeah, we hate to have, find out that they got to lay off an officer come July one.
Right. Hopefully, hopefully with-
Where they catch twenty-two?
Our hope is that we, that between savings on the two part-time, some savings on overtime, and the ten thousand dollars coming over from, from the ambulance account, we can then-
Well, do you want to put this in as just a temporary twenty-five thousand dollars? Do you, one, one shot at future to the budget?
Well, it is for this, because it's going from free cash, this thing.
So it doesn't go to the base budget this way, next year?
Well, it will be included in their, you know, it'll show in their actual if they spend it.
So they'll be able to show the savings?
It'll be a revised budget for them if they get, it'll, regardless of where the, where the funding sources, it'll show in their total budget line.
But if-
They got to be cross.
If their budget in fiscal twelve was leveled with where it started in fiscal eleven, we assume they wouldn't be able to maintain this?
Yeah, I, I think the assumption here is that next year, the police wage account would go up by a number, even if we were level funding, and we would put a number in there that allowed that officer to stay on.
Which is roughly fifty, because fringe benefits are thirty percent on top of that, and ten thousand would take you there.
We didn't, and we didn't adjust the fringe. I mean, we only, we only, this is the, all we did.
Right, but the fringe will be have to go in there, it's possible.
Well, it goes in for health insurance.
And retirement's going to go up, health insurance is going to up, retirement's going to go up.
As long as somebody knows that, that's money we'll have next year, and somebody's going to deal with it.
It's going to be a struggle to find it next year. And, and the problem with this is, no matter what we do, if we get an officer who's been through the academy, then he can go on duty right away. If we get an officer who has to go through the academy, he can work, but he can only work until he goes to the academy, and then we lose him for-
Six months?
Six months.
We encouraged him to look for someone.
Inversion will-
What about a thought also, and it's not just the police, but if we pay for the academy, then we get them assigned some kind of-
We need to do that, we need to do that with all our abilities, even our profession.
We spend, I forgot how many thousands and thousands to train these folks.
At the school department, the same thing.
Let's start with working out for twelve, I guess.
Ladies and, ladies, Carolyn, did you, did you want us?
What?
Did you want us?
I talked out meeting about the permanent thing, they're on the street for most of the year.
No.
Maybe it's tomorrow night, zoning board?
There's a calendar out there.
Thanks for coming. We had it on it.
You still have one.
So that, that's, that's-
How do you feel about this?
What?
How do you feel about this?
Um, I don't know, that ten thousand is a one-time thing, though.
No, the second one is okay, I'm talking about eleven.
That's the agreement we reached.
So that does offset somewhat, but-
Is there any way that we can transfer more from the ambulance fund, to help out the police department? I mean, we have a lot of money now.
No, we're down, actually.
A hundred and fifty-five?
Yeah, well, until we buy an ambulance, we have a lot, but the, the fund is limited to what we can do with it, we're stretching it.
Well, it's got to be fire, or EMS, ambid-
Well, it really, technically, the original vote was for, to purchase ambulances. It really was, I mean, I looked it up, that's, that was the vote. We've stretched it to be, to cover E M S related expenses, so, but this, this expense is actually not first responders, it's actually E, E M Ts. All the police officers are required to be first responders, so that's part of their job, not part of their job on the ambulance. What, what the agreement is, and there's actually a signed agreement now between the chiefs, that the board will have on their agenda next week, is that it's actually to cover the E M Ts that are police officers. And the agreement is that if the, if the officer arrives at the scene and begins life-saving measures as an E M T, and the ambulance arrives and needs a second E M T to be able to run, to be able to transport to the hospital, the police officer will, will ride along. Where now, well, there's been some, some controversy about whether they do it or not, but, but the, the fire chief has said they, they don't usually lock up the cruiser and go, they usually go back to, and now this would be where they would actually then assume the role of an E M T, and, and not be a, a police officer at that moment. So that, so there's, and right now there's two that are trained, it's about three thousand a, a year, he said, and they've got one in the, one in training now, so that's where the three comes from. So unless they had more.
Putting on this list of things to save money and be efficient, can we look at whatever changes it takes to the fire department to make them self-sufficient? All the money comes from their, their actions and their billings and all that?
Well, um-
I think they could be close.
Well, then you'd have to open up that, that ambulance fund to other town.
That's what I mean, anything in the fire department, you have to go back and change it and all that, whatever legal ways we had to, and I bet Steve could pull it off.
I mean, that, that might be some-
I mean, there are ambulance services that are self-sufficient, but they're very, very difficult to come by, most of them lose money. But, but fire departments, I've never heard of such a thing. I think legally, there's some requirement for the town, if you have a town fire department. I mean, there are districts, I know they do form districts that are, that are self-sufficient.
I, I, I would, I guess challenge the fact that legally we can't do it, until we find out, because I don't-
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I, I've never heard of such a thing, we can check.
We can create a lot of stuff, but anyways.
Well, that's why we, that's, we got creative with the ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think we're all for that, right?
Not necessarily. I have, I have a lot of trouble with eleven, and mostly, because I don't-
Twelve.
Well, no, I'm talking about eleven.
Yeah.
We're on eleven, twenty-five thousand for the police officer. I mean, I've heard the statement, we need to do this, so I'm obviously influenced by that. But as I look at this whole warrant, and go back to what I said at the beginning about how we really can't afford a lot of these additional free cash expenditures in categories that will come back next year. They're built in for the future fiscal years, they're not one-time payments. And this police officer will be here next year as a, not just a half-year support, but will have to have full-year support next year, and the benefits, and the insurance, and whatever else adds up to a number that we really will have to find additional money to be able to do this. That's why I asked the question, if the chief were here, and we said, if you've got the same salary budget next year as you're getting this year, can you save enough in your overtime account to fund this officer? If he said yes, I'd be all for it. But I don't think, from what I've heard, that that's the answer. So I feel like now we're looking at a, an article like number one, that I voted against, that is adding money in a category that is going to even get greater next year, significantly greater, I think, and I'm not sure where we're going to pay for it. So I'm a little nervous about adding an officer that I don't know if we can afford to keep into the future. But I, like I said, I heard someone say, we need to do this, and I'm not part of the negotiations or the private conversations in executive session that go on, so I guess I'm influenced by that. But I have a lot of trouble saying yes to eleven and no to some of the previous ones.
And, and to be honest, I don't think the chief implied that over, savings and overtime was going to say, you know, make up the cost of the officer.
Right, I, I mean, I, I said, if he were to say that, I'd be all in favor of this.
I hope I conveyed his, his thing correctly.
I'm sure he did.
But I don't think he said, you know, but we've, we've got to work on that, that overtime that those officers are getting, because that's a hefty, I forget the total overtime.
In FY ten, it was thirty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight.
Right, but would having an additional officer wipe out the need for overtime?
No.
No, he said no.
Right, so-
But he did say something about the first year that he was hired, there would be some, there would be less overtime expenses.
Because he would-
There's something about that officer.
Because it wouldn't go up, because he, he wouldn't be getting overtime, that new officer would not get overtime.
So the first year that he's hired-
Not that it's unaffected the other.
How does he know that?
That's what he said.
I mean, overtime is when you need it, right? That's why-
Well, the other side of it, because he would, if he hasn't gone through the academy, they really can't put him out alone.
Well, that's the other thing, if, if we approve this, town approves it, we should make it clear that if there's, you need to send them through the academy, you can't go back for more money, an extra ten grand or whatever, I mean, because that, that just keeps rolling downhill on us, and we don't have the money. I wish it was here, and it was more detailed.
Well, in, in article twelve, was, in my mind, article twelve is not dependent on article eleven.
Correct, we're in favor of article twelve.
Okay.
We want to do that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's a chance, take it.
So you let him make the case to the town?
Well, are you all in favor of eleven?
The chief for years has made a good case for another officer or two, we've never been able to afford it. But with this ten thousand, and potential, not all, but some offsetting overtime, looks to me like we could get another officer at a discount price.
Twenty-five, right now.
An officer probably costs sixty-five grand.
It'd be forty, probably.
By next year, it'll be more.
Not fifty, but forty if you, if you got the tenant, if there's some overtime savings, that's all if. Now, we get to next year and say, well, we can't afford it, maybe. Or are we done?
Well, I, we don't know about next year.
Right.
We just know it's going to be tight.
Right.
Which, which, which is maybe- Why do we want to save our free cash?
In the meantime, do we want to have another officer for half a year?
That's the question.
Other?
That's the question.
Can we get an officer, it's like, I mean, let's, let's not kid, sixty-five thousand dollars, fifty for pay, thirty for that, that's sixty-five. And ten thousand dollars is not going to touch that sixty-five thousand, that's, that's something, so, so you're still talking to the fifty thousand dollars somewhere.
All right, I see, four.
And that's fine, I, I think we need another officer, but do we want to spend fifty? I mean, that's a dilemma we'll face whenever we're, I, I think, let the chief make the case for it.
Yeah, okay.
I don't, you know, we need the officer, but we can't afford to-
We don't have the money.
Can we take a, just no vote, if that's what we want to do? Or do you want to take a vote and?
Like, like you said, we, the finance committee probably needs more information.
Well, I don't know that we're going to get more information.
Well.
I think we've heard what the chief would say next week, if, when he stands up and talks about this article, and I think we have to take a stand on it. I don't think we can say we're not taking a stand on it.
I disagree, because we got the information from Mike, and Mike's giving it secondhand, he's not a hundred percent sure, and I think that's fair, so I, I could have a stand on an issue to hear on the floor.
Just, just a piece of information that I came across today, in speaking to the building inspector. The building inspector tells me that we have twenty-plus homes under construction right now, and that we have now a population, he believes, of about seven thousand people. I don't know whether that number is accurate, but that's what his opinion was today. I always thought it was six, but-
Right now, it's only, it's like fifty-nine hundred. We just did our, we just did-
Still in the fives, right?
Yeah, it's in the fives.
But that's what I-
I mean, last year's census was-
It's just under six thousand.
Yes, fifty-nine hundred.
But, but, again, with twenty homes under construction, and I don't know how many have been completed, it was, I don't know where he got the number, but he gave me the number that he thought we were approaching seven thousand, if that influences-
It's a lot of people in twenty houses, a thousand people.
Well, I know.
So laborers are building houses, they're moving in.
Anyway, okay, so we're going to talk about this later, okay, all right. Eleven is fine with us.
No, eleven is, I'm sorry, twelve is fine with us.
Thirteen is the ambulance fees to E M T training wages.
Training?
That's the name of the account, but it's, it's really just the new E M Ts.
It wages, and this-
He might take training out of it, too.
If I get this right, this time, this is the fire chief, a while ago, we asked him to see about staffing the ambulance on a more full-time basis, and he, this is to cover the people he's been bringing in to have daytime coverage for the ambulance. He tells us that our response time during the day has gone from ten minutes to one minute, from the time they get, because somebody's in the station eight hours a day during the day. So, so this is to take, moving us towards a full-time fire department.
We don't care what happens.
If I explained that properly.
That's correct.
We've been working on this for a while.
Well, and it's coming out, and this is why we're using the ambulance fund.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not a tax, it's not a taxpayer number, it's, it's coming out of user fees, almost.
So he's not the first responder all the time?
I think he's, I think he's still, he's one of the ones that's there all the time, but he's got somebody else coming in, so there's now two of them.
So this doesn't go here?
No, I don't think so, no.
So it's an additional?
It's an additional person that's there, so they can roll the ambulance right away, instead of waiting for one of the volunteers to come in. Okay, fine.
Okay, article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand from the ambulance account, to fund a capital improvement budget for FY two thousand and eleven, as follows, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand for the purchase of a new ambulance, or take any other action relative thereto.
We have a two thousand and eight ambulance, is our first-line ambulance, and we have, I forget the year on the other one.
Two thousand and two or three.
Eight or nine years old. The eight or nine-year-old one has forty-eight thousand miles on it. So this would be to roll our first-line ambulance back to that position and sell that second ambulance. He thinks, I forget what she's thought of it, thirty?
Yeah.
Thirty?
I think he said, I think he did say-
Thirty? That's what I told our group last year.
Okay, thirty, maybe, I, I was thinking it was thirteen, but thirty might be enough.
It was like twenty to twenty-five, I think.
So, the, the hundred and seventy-five would be offset by recovery at some point in time, twenty, twenty-five.
Have you guys seen stats on how many times the first one rolls and then the second one rolls, or just sitting there?
We tried.
And you can't?
We can, we have reports, we have reports in our office.
Yeah, because that would be a convincing stat. The second one is just sitting there, waiting all the time, and why you end it one, but it's always rolling.
We tried to, at one point in time, there was thought that we would have a, would do patient transport, nursing home transport, and the chief thought he could make, but that didn't pan out, so I understand that. Do you need me?
You are.
Sucking these down like water.
Yeah, personally, I guess without that stat, I wouldn't have enough information on it.
Um, I, I think, if I remember what the chief said the last time, is that these ambulances at, that standard for, is nine years?
Nine years, turnover.
Turnover time for the ambulance.
My age is not important, his concern is the frame of this one, because it carries that heavy box in the back.
And it goes miles, pretty rugged miles, a lot of miles.
Yes.
Are we getting the gas the next time?
Nope, they make them diesel.
They don't make them gas?
He had a pretty convincing argument for diesel, and Mike had that same question of him as well. Either one's- Either one's.
We're paying extra for that, a lot of extra money for that diesel that we're not using it up in mileage.
And the engine.
Huh?
Right, couple thousand bucks extra for the diesel.
I would guess you're paying 10 or 20 for that diesel engine.
Plus the fuel.
Right. And, and that diesel should go a couple hundred thousand miles without any serious difficulty. And we're turning it over at 48,000.
Don't need diesel for that.
My understanding is though, it's the startup loads on the diesel. We have a technical there. As the analysis we said for a long time, it gets suddenly started. You might have noticed until the fuel got so expensive, these tractor trucks would stay running all the time, even they were parked in restaurants on the front of the bike. But that's because it's very, very hard on the motor to start.
Well, so if you're starting a diesel from the coal, starting an emergency.
You'd be better off with the gas.
Better off with gas.
Better off with gas.
If you're getting done.
The diesel, the diesel.
The diesel runs more efficiently when it's hot.
Right.
It doesn't run efficiently when it's cold. So, anyway, that.
The fund has enough to fund both of these articles, the 40,000 and the 175?
Yes.
And the 10.
You may remember, you may remember that there was an ambulance on the annual town
meeting, which we did not, we passed over because there was not enough money. Now there is.
Yeah, it was on the capital plan, but we actually didn't put it on the, on the warrant because we didn't have the funding at that point.
This is 225 on the same fund.
Yes.
There's nothing there.
We'd have what?
250.
So, we're always going to.
He anticipated being back up to 200 and something.
Yeah, I think that can be a self-sufficient operation, I really got to tell you. I mean, he could, yeah.
Well, I, I'd have trouble saying the fire chief, that I know better than the fire chief, what he needs to do with the ambulance. So, uh, if he says that the ambulance is not in good enough shape at this point to be run as our backup, then I, I won't argue with him. I mean, if they have the money in the fund, then I'm personally okay with it. Anybody else want to voice it?
There he is.
Look at that.
How many times does that number two ambulance go out?
The hearing audience felt that I should show off.
How, how often does that number two ambulance go out? That's what the question.
Okay, statistically, I don't have a number. I just know that it's one more frequent. Uh, I asked Mr. Phil and his neighbor at the end of the night, but probably twice a week now we're running back-to-back runs for both ambulances are out.
Twice a week? And it wouldn't survive another year?
No, we've already pushed it because the board had asked me two years ago to bring on some more full-time employment. So, I did that, used the money for that. And, uh, right now, the trade-in value of this ambulance, there's some interest in it where we can get some significant money. Uh, if I were just, the other ambulance that we traded in, bought 10,000 in trade-in. This one, normally do, I asked a couple of viewers out here, they're saying about the same thing. If I were to go out and sell it, we draw and sell it big, we're probably looking anywhere from 30,000, 50,000 for this truck right now.
You're probably good.
Right. Uh, there's some interest out there for some other usage of it, and it fits into their needs, so they're willing to pay that kind of money for it. Uh, and it's not so much about diesel versus gas, I mean, on the engine, it's the overall vehicle. There's a lot of different things that go wrong in it. Uh, for instance, uh, just one of the stretchers in the ambulance will shut us down. We had a bad piston on a lift in an ambulance there, uh, which I just had overnight in a piston, but we were playing around with that for about four days, and, uh, I had to use a pair of vice strips to keep that so we could adjust the lift on that, which could take that whole ambulance out of service. So, we're looking at the whole package, not just the engine. The engine's great. We have, have, there's not many ambulances out there that you can buy that don't have people. They all covered diesel because of safety reasons. But, uh, the overall truck, this truck here, we had more problems than any of our past ambulances. I put a lot of right work and front end parts into it, so it's, uh, not without its problems.
But you still think you can sell it for a boot and chopper change?
Yeah, because they're not going to use it as a first response emergency vehicle.
Now, what about leasing a new one? Are, can we lease a new one short-term or?
I, uh, in the ambulance business, I don't know anybody out there that's doing any leasing.
No. Are you okay with this?
Hmm? Yeah, we're okay with it. We loaded it.
Anybody else?
Nope, it's fine.
Okay. We're ready to move.
Okay.
Article 15. Fine for us.
Oh, yeah.
It's a council fund this.
Creative preservation.
That's CPC.
Listen to the call.
Thank you. Good response time.
Do you see some? Is that on TV?
That was what it called me.
Oh, okay.
Right in my evening.
Thank you.
That's good to have the answers, though.
The, um, Article 15 takes a two-thirds vote now.
Yes.
And then Article 16 is, is the collective aggregation of electric bills.
And who would turn that one down?
Not us.
Not us. And just for, someone's coming back to speak on that one.
Yes.
I don't remember.
It's real steam.
We asked someone to come in and address the town meeting.
They're getting back into the aggregate, purchasing bills and interest.
Yep. So, can we just take a quick review?
Sure.
Article one, the ambulance, which we are now going to amend to reflect a $500 lump sum award to non-union employees prorated by the hours they work. What are you going to do with the salaried employees? Just occurred to me, we have some, some department heads who work, we have department heads that work various numbers of hours.
You're not talking about department heads, though. You were just talking about this.
Oh, we're not, we're not including department heads?
In his motion, it didn't include.
Okay, that's why I'm going back over this because, okay, so we don't include department heads. It's only hourly employees.
Right.
Does that cause any problems with that list, Diana?
Not, it's just the top end of the list.
Right, but it's, it's, so department head, in plain English, department head raises are frozen or wages are frozen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Which now requires that Article two be amended to reflect some new amount that we don't know what it is yet.
Yes, if the First Amendment.
If the First Amendment fails.
What's your energy?
If the First Amendment fails, then we're going to pass over Article two because that money will remain in free cash. You guys are, the finance, finance committee is okay with the 30 in Article three and the 20 in Article four. Uh, the 8,500 for the energy audit. Uh, the energy audit is, is number six, too.
Yeah.
The 33,000 from free cash, finance committee is voting.
I go.
No on that. I would assume we should probably, how, how is the select board going to do that? Are we going to support that article? We never took a vote directly on these.
We haven't certainly voted. We could.
Let's keep the money in free cash.
Well, here, somebody make a motion, we'll discuss it and then see what happens, whether we've decided to support it or not.
So, I'll move that we, uh, we consider Article seven as, as a forward.
All right.
Whether or not we approve or not.
How about, how about if we took a motion for the purposes of discussion to support Article seven?
So, I'll move that we support Article seven.
And if there was a second for the purposes of discussion only?
For the purposes of discussion only.
So, a second.
For purposes of discussion.
Discussion.
Do we want to support that article? Or do we want to follow the finance boards? Finance committees lead and leave it in free cash.
I like that the finance committee has said, we certainly recognize that we'll probably need that, those monies to go over to buy salt and other chemicals and fuel, but at the same time, if it's in free cash, it's not in excess.
It's not preventing us.
It certainly is accessible.
Right, it's not preventing us using it.
So, if we put it over in that budget line, it doesn't mean that it's going to be misused or anything like that. It simply means that it stays in, in free cash. There's not a psychological element, but it certainly is just a, I think, a better place to put it. I understand that.
Wouldn't be surprising to hear one of the citizens ask the question, but if you leave it in free cash, won't it just get spent on something else?
It's going to go back.
And the answer is, you can't spend it without coming to a meeting like this. You can spend it, we can't spend it. So, hopefully that'll make them feel better.
All right. I have a motion and a second is the discussion. Well, is, do we, now the question becomes, do we support? All right, take a motion, vote on the motion?
All right.
All right. All right, now what?
So, you just, the motion was to support it.
Oh, support.
We know, I know, but you voted to support.
Or supported. Yeah, so we should.
She should have said no.
She should have said no.
No, no. All right, so I'll withdraw my vote.
I rescinded my vote.
I do.
I wish you'd know.
I'll say no.
No.
So, the, the, which is kind of interesting because we're the ones who.
Initiate.
Initiates.
But it's not saying exactly the money, it's just putting it into a different.
And the question is, do you want to make a motion just to pass over the article immediately or do you want to move, are you going to move the article and then have this question and then make a motion to pass? You know what I'm saying? Because when I do your motions, you can have a motion just to pass over it.
Which, yeah, because we're the ones, and that's, I think.
Put it on, right.
I think I might have been the one to put it on.
So, it would be the simplest, to pass over it?
I believe so. I mean, unless there's somebody there who.
So, it'd have to come up from the floor.
Wants, yeah, want, not doesn't, you know, wants to vote it, but I think they're going to take your lead if you don't think it makes sense. I don't think, you know, the citizens.
You want to take it?
So, we just, do we have to?
Pass over that?
Yeah.
I move that we pass over this article.
Second. Okay, so your motion will, your motions will reflect that.
Yeah. Uh, now, the 5,000 from free cash for technic, technology, you guys are okay with. Uh, we are, too. Uh, to see 5,000 for free cash for the moving, okay. Uh, to pay the outstanding overdue bill, you're okay.
I don't think so.
The, the $25,000 for an extra police officer.
Who didn't vote.
We're going to stick around after our meeting with you and keep passionate.
Oh, that one's still open.
Yeah.
Uh, 10,000 from ambulance fund to police department, you're okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, 40,000 for wages, you're okay. The ambulance, you're okay. The 15,000 from CP, you're okay. And. I lost.
Energy.
16.
Resolution.
16, I've shuffled my pages, so you're okay.
Keep the low of the.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we start this all again in another month?
Oh, okay, you do have that, Bob. Now, could we take a minute to talk about that, though?
Pardon?
Did you just hand, did you just hand them?
Oh, no, that was for one of your select.
In your packet, though, you do have the proposed FY 12 budget letter that goes out every year and then the schedule for the, from the finance committee and just the, the question sheets that we send out. So, I guess I just, I was hoping that Bob and Mike would sign this sooner than later because we need to get it out. Um, so I was hoping you'd just review it quickly.
Yeah, I, I don't even have a copy of the letter because I thought it was still sort of a draft form.
Well, it is a draft, but I mean, I guess.
But I didn't know if you were going to change it still again.
Well, I, I'm not changing it at all.
Are you, Diana?
I actually hit it up.
Oh, really? Okay.
This to the department heads to submit?
Yeah. I mean, I, I sent, what I did is I sent the letter, the draft letter from last year to Bob and asked him to revise it because my understanding is that, you know, that much of this was going to be initiated by the finance committee this year. So, then he, he revised it and this is the revised copy and then he, and, and last year what we did is we had the finance committee chair and the selectman chair sign it jointly, so that's how he arranged the questions. And the only question really, I think, is on the salary. There's just a blank line that needs to be filled in, I guess.
It's no secret that FY 11 budget is tight, so it is imperative that budget managers stay within their limits of the requirement of budgets.
Is that referring to the last?
That's what you.
That last paragraph referring to the current budget. Are we going to give them any guidance on FYI?
Well, on.
Or FY, FY 12?
Right, on the first page, in terms of, um, I mean, Bob's given a great synopsis in paragraph one of basically what you're looking for for the, for the expense budget, but then paragraph three talks about wages and that's where you have the situation that you had last year, which is you don't, you have, you haven't had a uniform, um, you know, you have never set a standard for the salary increases that aren't guided by unions or contracts. You've just left it up to department heads to submit. And so, the question is, do you want to insert something in that line? Or not?
Do you guys want to do that? I mean, this doesn't have to go out tonight.
No, but, um, next week we have a full agenda. You have a special town meeting, then we're not meeting again until December 28th. So, I just, I mean, you could, you could take the week, I mean, you could have a brief meeting with the finance committee next Tuesday, but.
Well, I don't mind throwing out an idea or two about it. Um, right now, let's see if we get anywhere. The idea would be that we know we're going into the next fiscal year with local school contract continuing one more year.
Yeah.
At, highway contract continuing one more year or two more years?
No, just one.
One more. I think Hampshire Regional is going to negotiate a new contract for next year. Um, so, I mean, if we come out and take a stand and say X percent, then I don't know if that gives negotiating teams like Hampshire Regional a sense that Southampton's okay with that percent that they wrote in their statement to their budget managers, one of whom is the Hampshire Regional. So, I'm, I'm hesitant to put anything in there for that reason, plus the fact that, as we've already said, I'll be ecstatic if somehow our budget works out for fiscal 12 that we actually can afford some raises for the people we talked about tonight, as well as the contract negotiations that took place in past years. But I'd, I'd have trouble writing a one or a two or a three percent in that blank right now, personally, because I think it gives sort of guidance to other groups that we really aren't prepared to provide than we leave it the way that.
So, um, last year.
If we write two, then it sounds like we think we can afford two for everybody, but we don't think we can afford even zero.
Do we, do we start out with a zero?
I mean, it's a terrible thing to have to put again because we started that way last year.
But that's the reality.
But it is the reality. It is the reality of your job and my job and a lot of other people's jobs.
Yeah, technically, when we wrote the letter last year, we didn't ask for salaries at that point. We didn't, we just.
Oh, you're right.
We left it out of the pick because inevitably what happens is soon as I send this letter out, if it doesn't say something about salaries, people call and say, what should I put in for salaries? So, last year, what your position was is that right now, we're not considering salaries at this time. We're just looking at expense budgets.
And if you're talking about another, even a, any kind of state budget cut, but a 5% budget cut, where would we be? We'd be better off building a very conservative budget, and we thought we were going to come up with free cash this year, and we didn't come up. The, the $170,000 is really no free cash.
Right.
Um, the 300,000 was barely free cash. You know, when we talked about the budgets last year, we said if we came up with a substantial amount of free cash, we might fund raises. And I think I was hoping at least that it was going to be a $500,000 number, not a $170,000.
Yeah.
I, my suggestion would be that, I don't see where they're going, you're going to get money for raises. And if.
Or simply say, please leave wage and salary amounts level funded, something like that.
And the unions are going to have to wake up to the reality that they're forcing us to pay the raises, but the next negotiation doesn't look to be any better than these. And they're going to, they may in fact. Lose people, or when we negotiate the next time, it's going to have to be more on our financial terms.
I think what's going to happen is they're going to lose people, that's a bad far half. Is they're going to force the budget up and somebody's going to have to pay for it.
So should this third paragraph even be in this letter at this point?
I think.
Yeah, if you guys say that last.
Yeah, you have to, you have to address.
You're going to give us some guidance.
Yeah, you have to address the issue. I don't know, you have to give them a number.
I think it's better to give the guidance than to say, let's deal with it three months from now because, I mean, it'd be nice if three months from now, we're going to deal with it by raising it. Well, and perhaps I pose the hypothetical that this board, maybe to your board, do we think we're going to be in a position to give raises next year of any significant number?
I don't see how the numbers will work out.
So based on that, would you offer any guidance to the department heads as to what they should do with their wage items?
Level funded.
Level funded.
Twenty new houses, think there'll be no additional tax levy associated with that?
Well, there will be some new growth, but new growth gets off, sometimes gets offset by other things. Those twenty new houses may bring in ten vocational students, which will kill us.
Right.
If, those kind of numbers are difficult to predict and where they're going to, you know, be increases versus decreases. And I keep thinking about the morale part of this and I feel for people who are in these categories and seeing another year where they're saying, we're not going to get a wage increase. And yet, to put it two percent as a dream scenario and then yank it back three months from now is not a good thing to do either. I'd rather start with zero and add one or two or three later on. Because I don't, I think most people in town understand that 176 was not a great free cash number for us to receive. In fact, it was very discouraging. And the state numbers of potential other cuts of five to 10 percent is extremely discouraging. So for us to pretend that we might give nice wage increases next year in this letter doesn't make sense.
What do we receive in state aid?
260 this year, I believe, or 530?
560.
Yeah, 560 or 530.
So you took five percent of that, that $25,000? Did I do that math right?
Yeah, five percent of it.
If you add its five percent decrease, would be $25,000.
Right.
And 10 percent, obviously, would be 50.
Yeah, and, you know, that will be spread over regional probably as well. I don't know, Chapter 70, will they protect it or not?
I just told you. I just told you locally. I don't know about Chapter 70. I mean, I know what the numbers, but I don't know if that will be protected.
And that doesn't probably reflect Chapter 90 monies either.
Actually, Chapter 90, they're trying to increase, right?
Right, they're trying to increase it.
They're hoping to.
But where?
But that's also, it might be a dream scenario in there.
Well, and I don't think, Dave, you weren't here last week when Ed came in with his priority list.
But you did get a copy.
We got it, he brought it to us, yeah.
You know, pretty staggering.
Oh, we know those numbers are really huge. And yet, they're, they have to be met someday. And so, but that's a different approach to how you fund that kind of stuff, I think. And that's got to come up and then hopefully in the next month or two, we need to keep meeting.
Well, and that, and the talk last, and the two selectmen here weren't here last week, but the talk was that maybe we package up a bonding issue to do some of the work that won't get paid by state aid.
Right.
That never will get, which on that note, we also went to the Larrabee Building Committee and asked them to stay as a building needs committee for a public safety complex.
Really, okay.
To, if we were going to do something, then we might package up something up as a, as a debt exclusion bonding issue to do something with this building and the fire station. Because there's more problems with the structure on the fire station than is obvious. There's water, water under one of the foundation walls.
Really?
Well, we take advantage of these low interest rates, too.
Well, sure.
So the net result of that was that we were, Douglas and I were at the building committee meeting and they're going to consider staying a little longer.
All right, that's good.
To do it in the back, they haven't said yes.
They did such a good job. And they said no, right? Accompanying this is the, oh, you have the schedule, it's on the back. We're going to try to meet with, well, we are going to meet with every department between January 18th and March 8th.
Right.
And that doesn't include you at all. So you may want to look at that and say, should these, some of these be joint meetings or will we deal with that after March 8th? That's a discussion you folks can have. I mean, we've got a schedule. Whether we hold all these meetings in our meeting room or some of them jointly with you is something that you folks can talk about.
All right, I think we should meet with you on a minimum once a month.
You know, we may not need to participate in your individual meetings, but that would be my opinion, you're better attuned to that, but we should at least know where we are once a month.
Do you think once a month is enough?
It may not be. And during this season, yeah. Because we're just going to be collecting information, one department at a time, and not trying to build a budget as we go, go, because the big budgets come later.
Right, and then come April.
Come March 8th, we're going to start to talk about building a budget.
Right, then we probably, we may need to meet more than once a month.
Right. All right.
So in terms of this letter, what was your final decision, then? You just want to?
The last line could say, we don't anticipate any. Well, I don't know, the whole paragraph, I guess, could simply say that we're, we don't anticipate. We'd like the wage items, wage and salary lines to be level funded. Is that correct?
Yes.
And should we, at the same time, ask what the consequences of them level funding now would be? Consequences of who?
Of them, if they level funded, especially the departments that have filled in raises that, you know, we can union.
Oh.
Do you think you have to ask them?
Yeah.
I think they're going to tell you at their budget meetings.
Yeah, I will.
The sentence does say that, is increase accounts according. So that's our reading of our budget here.
Yeah.
And then. Then if it's, if these positions are not on such a schedule, consider level funding.
Yeah, actually, the paragraph does say that if you are bound by a contract, increase your wage accounts by that percent. And that's a logical thing to say or not.
Well, that's different than saying what you said earlier, which is if they increase next year, then they would have to get that somewhere in their expense account and that could affect their departments. I mean, that's what you said earlier.
Right.
If you increase, if you don't increase those wage lines, it basically means if they give raises, they have to find it, you know, it has to be figured out some way.
Have to offset from something in the budget.
Right, but saying right now, go ahead and increase your wage lines, is saying that we understand that we're going to have to fund those raises, but I don't know how we're going to fund them.
But we don't want them decreasing their expense budgets.
Well, I think that the Board of Selectmen has to play a role in what happens if the town cannot afford to increase all of the wage, negotiated wage lines by the negotiated percents.
Correct.
And if the town can't afford to do that, then you level fund the wage lines and you keep the expense lines where they are, but that means they can't pay their employees beyond April or May.
Right, then they have to pay.
So something has to happen. I mean, that's, again, it's a horrible scenario to talk about, but it is possible, it's probably more possible than not. And that's very disheartening, but that's just where we are.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm not sure what we're writing anymore in that.
Well, I have wage and salary.
Period, period, okay, that makes sense.
Period.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Are you going to meet?
We're going to keep meeting, where can we?
I would say.
We're going to probably sit in the hall.
All right.
It's okay. We have a bench there.
All right, fine.
Do we have any minutes? We're moving on our agenda. Public access channel is not coming in tonight.
Right, he couldn't, well, we think on the agenda tentatively, but he couldn't make it, so we've got him postponed until next Tuesday.
Do we have any minutes? I don't have any in my package.
No, we don't see any.
No minutes to approve. Payroll warrant.
Payroll warrants. We have a payroll warrant, P11 dash 24, with a total amount of $251,343.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a bill warrant that we voted on last time, but we didn't have enough members to sign it.
We just need Ann and Jess to sign, or one of them, if they both want to sign it, that's great.
Doug couldn't sign.
The bill warrant, is it there, from here somewhere?
Yep, it's right there.
No.
Just to be clear.
We have a warrant, W11 dash 23, with a total amount of $542,834 and 6 cents.
And that was voted, well.
Yeah, it was already voted.
It was already voted.
Well, it couldn't have been voted because Doug couldn't sign it.
Well, it wasn't voted, it was signed. You don't have to vote on one, you just have to have three signatures.
PCFs, nothing at this time?
No.
Town administrators' report?
No, I have nothing, just our ongoing items.
Why did you bring?
The first bullet, here, upcoming events, I'm sorry. Shouldn't it be the 28th then, rather than the 30th?
Yeah, it should be the 20th. We've said that several times. I think she was looking at the calendar on June and November.
Going back to the town administrator's report, which there is none, but we, you did attend that meeting over at Larrabee. And we are still trying to make our January 12th move date.
Yes.
The elevator over there is the issue. But we are led to believe that that may be resolved tomorrow, but still need inspections.
Correct.
So that's one issue. The second issue is.
That's really the main issue. The other issues, I think, are not insurmountable in terms of moving in. The only, well, go ahead, Mike, what was the other?
Well, the other issue that I was disappointed in is the utilities over there.
Oh, yes.
We, we need to get on them over there, whether it takes someone of us or whatever. When I went in there last week, it was very, very warm, warmer than it needs to be if it was occupied. And we're paying the utilities now. So whatever it takes to get them to cut the heat back over there, I don't buy the issue that it needs a computer to turn the heat back.
No, I, I think what it is, is somebody has to, you know, it's not just as easy as, like, you can't just press the switch on the wall. I think that something, a master switch has to be over, you know, it has to be.
But right now, they're squandering our money. And if it takes a letter from us or something.
Well, I'll check, Keith's going to be on the site all day tomorrow to deal with the testing, so I'll check with him first thing in the morning and see if they can figure that out tomorrow.
What is first thing in the morning for him?
When you're going by in the morning with his trucks there, I mean, he's, I don't know, set between seven and eight usually.
What kind of trucks he drive?
His five-star.
A five-star?
Five-star truck.
So if I look over and see a five-star, I got to go by?
He probably would be the only person there at that point, unless there's contractors there.
I will try and see if I see him tomorrow because the building is ridiculously warm. So that's, anything else over there?
No, just Charter went over today and looked at the cable, so they're going to be able to hook up the high-speed internet in the next couple of days, so we'll be able to get the computer systems for the building up and running.